I'm going to call the meeting to order. Will you join me? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Thank you. Welcome to the Monday, March 20 meeting of the Westport Select Board. I want to start off the meeting with just a special note. We're going to have a special Select Board meeting on Wednesday, the 22nd, at 6:30. This is a joint meeting with the Finance Committee and the School Committee. It'll be remote. You can look for the link online. But just a reminder, put your, on your calendars, Wednesday at 6:30, we'll have a Select Board meeting with Finance. Finance Committee's going to chair the meeting. We'd like to recognize the passing of Shirley Palmer. Shirley died at home on her 99th birthday on March 4. She's been very active at town. She was a nurse. She did a lot of nurse sitting for families overnight. But I think that her relation to the town was she was the unofficial secretary to Westport Shellfish Constable and Conservation Agent. So she did many phone calls, many typing of reports, many caring for Westport Shellfish Constable and Conservation. I know Shirley was very active at our church. So our church family really misses her. We send our condolences to the family. Their family's very active here in Westport. So the whole Palmer family has our deepest sympathy. Does anybody want to say anything about Shirley? Okay, Betty, Betty.
I really liked her. She was a Tabor. She was Andrew Tabor's daughter. Andrew Tabor is very famous because he built so many houses in Westport. And she was one of four sisters. And her sister Glenda Broadbent was kind of the unofficial historian in town. But I interviewed them several times, she and Ab and Glenda and Walter. And so those are available on the Historical Society website. So if any of you are interested, they were fascinating interviews.
It says in her obituary, she believes she was the last person born at Westport Point.
Yes. I think that's probably true. We're all old.
That's a great piece of history, or she's going to be missed. Our condolences to the family. The next item we have is a public hearing. So we have, someone for the hearing can come up. We have an application request from Bulldog Performance Plus Holco, Inc. for a Class 1 motor vehicle license and repair license at 867 State Road in Westport, Mass. For manager Glenn Sylvia. Do you want to come up and? So we have all your paperwork, which appears to be in order. We have a plan on file from 2012 and a positive police report. I wonder if you could just give us a little briefing of what you're going to be doing over there.
So as it was known as Henry's Diesel Performance before, the only difference really is that Bulldog Fire Apparatus focuses on emergency vehicles, primarily fire apparatus and ambulances. Not to say that we won't take an occasional camper in as Henry did before, or some DPW vehicles and stuff like that. But our primary focus is on repairing and sales of fire apparatus and ambulances.
Anybody have any questions?
We approve, but this big works all in order. And it's been, it's been there forever, so.
Yeah, we're not changing anything, but everything's going to stay the same status.
So a motion and second to approve. Is there any comments or discussion? This is a public hearing. Is there anything from the public? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good luck. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate being part of the town.
Our pleasure.
Glad to have you here.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So 1A, we have a request from Paula Gothier. Well, you can come. And Martha Moffett, I don't believe Martha Moffett is here, to be appointed to the Cultural Councils. Let's go up there. Hi. So we just need to, can you move the mic towards, one of the mics towards you?
Oh, sure.
Thank you. Can you just tell us a little bit about yourself and why you want, interested in the Cultural Council?
Sure. I, well, I've been living in Westport full time for the last 11 years. And my work is in, is still based in Boston. And so I mostly have, you know, work, 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 and enjoying everything that's great about Westport, but not really having the time to get involved. And in the last year, I've been fortunate enough just to kind of scale back my work a little bit and have time to volunteer and do something. And, you know, I was thinking about the different things I could do. And the Cultural Council appealed to me. I have a background in arts, a background in film and television. And, you know, I've been to many of the events that they support. I knew someone on the committee, the council, who, you know.
Somebody recruited you. That's how we get our best people.
But, you know, it was something that I was really interested in. Yeah. So that's really the reason. So, and I was finally to reach a point where I'm not just working all the time and can give a little back, yeah.
Well, awesome. Well, thank you for stepping up.
Do we have vacancies?
Yep, we do. Yep. We have two vacancies, right?
Yeah, these are the last.
These will fill out.
So I shall move her.
Second.
So we're going to move Paula Gothier and Martha Moffett, who is not here.
Yeah.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous. Welcome.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
1B, we have a request from Olivia Carrero to be appointed to the Recreation Commission. I think we have a couple slots open for that one, right? Do we have any discussion? I know she's here, but she's a little shy. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous. Welcome aboard. So you just need to go, both, both of you, the clerk's office will have a thing for you to.
Your form.
The form that you have to sign up. Yeah, and get sworn in. But that might be a couple days.
And it's tradition, newest member has to dress in the bunny suit for the Easter.
They didn't tell you about that?
All right. Thank you, ladies. Beverly, you want to come talk to us?
Sure.
We have a request from Beverly Bish. She's the Council on Aging Director to accept the resignation of Jaclyn Solnier as Transportation Clerk as of April 13, 2023.
Yeah, Jackie's been with us for just eight, I just hit eight years and she was hired just after me as the Transportation Clerk. And she and her husband had owned Sparkle Cleaners for many, many years at Fall River. And they sold the business, you know, a few years ago. So she just wanted something part-time. And right now, she's ready to retire. She's done a phenomenal job. She's been a great asset and really fits in very well with the, with the COA and the culture there. So I'm going to miss her.
I'll move to accept the resignation and send the letter of thanks.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then I want to bump up 3H on the agenda. So 3H is a request from Beverly Bish to post for the vacant position of the part-time transportation clerk. So this is not a union position, right?
No.
Did you move it?
I did.
Okay, so we have motion and second to post for the, the vacated clerk position. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous. Beverly, anything you want to share about what's going on in the COA?
We have the meet the candidates Thursday morning from 9:30 to 11:30, 12 o'clock, for anybody that wants to come in and listen to the candidates. We'll probably have some information there too about the diamond school. I want to make sure that that's told to people too. And any of the other, the information that we were talking about too. Want to make sure that we're getting information out there to seniors so that they know what they're voting on and what the decisions are and how they've come up upon the decision. So we're going to do that. We also have DA Thomas Quinn III coming in on Wednesday, March 29 at 1 o'clock. And he's going to come in and talk to seniors about scams and senior reviews and all of that. He usually comes around. He hasn't been around for a few years, most because of COVID. But I did see him and meet up with him at one of the legislative breakfasts at Coastline Health Services a couple weeks ago. And he said, oh, I need to get by your place. So he's coming then. So if anybody, I just put it on Facebook, if anybody wants to come in to see that. And other than that, I mean, there's a billion things. It's constant, constant there. It just never ends. We were finally able to find an art instructor. So on March 15, we started our art class back up again. And we have many of the people who were in the art class before coming back. And the room's a little bit small, so we can only fit like 12 people. We don't use the big room because there's other things going on. But every single one of them said, thank you so much for bringing it back. We've been waiting and waiting. And so they're really happy that we're doing that. That's all for us though.
All right, anything for Beverly? Thank you. Thank you for what you've done over there.
Thank you.
We have several items related to East Beach coming up next. So we have 2A is a request to conditionally approve the six-month trailer permits for the East Beach area. So this is our normal, we conditionally approve them. So that way, once Paula gets all the paperwork, then she can just issue the permits.
I'll move that. Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor? Wait.
You were too fast for it.
Sorry.
Yeah, we just want to be clear on this as to what, what this means. It's those who don't have an issue with the Conservation Commission, which is from the settlement agreement, we've gotten them more involved. Parties have agreed to that. So if there's a problem with the Conservation Commission, that has to be worked out before issuing a permit. So I assume these are, I'm not familiar with the process in the past.
This is just a conditional, once everything is cleared and all the boxes are checked off, then Paula can just send it out. She doesn't have to bring them all back to us.
Come back to a meeting.
But yeah, if they don't have all the paperwork in order, then they wouldn't be approved.
We pretty much do this every year now.
Yeah. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous. So 3A, I know there's a note on our, the Town Administrator Recommendations to, to continue that to the next meeting. But I did talk to Dick, who's the closest to us here, and he suggested we go ahead and talk about it. So actually, the item 3A is a request to ratify the approval of the settlement agreement with the East Beach Improvement Association. The, you'll recall that we authorize Dick and Ann, I think, to represent us in the negotiations and settlement. They've reached an agreement and signed off. I think that their lawyer just wanted to come to the full board for just final ratification. So I think we've already agreed to it as we authorized them to do.
I, well, I would move that we continue to the next meeting just to make sure that we have, that Jim has had a chance to go over it and.
So Jim already signed it.
Oh, he did?
Yeah.
I thought, well, why am I getting recommended continuing the next meeting?
So, so.
I heard some of what you said, but I'm sorry.
Okay, let me try it again. So Jim had recommended we continue it, right? But I talked to Dick, because Dick has been involved in the negotiations, right? And Dick pointed out that we've already signed off. We had already authorized Dick and Ann to represent us.
Okay.
And they've already negotiated the agreement. So Dick, anyway, didn't feel, I'm going to let you talk. I don't want to put words in your mouth, but Dick didn't feel there was any reason to wait.
Yeah, I know that Jim was having a meeting with the representatives of the East Beach group on Friday. He didn't check in with me to say there were any problems or anything we should be concerned about. Absent that, the agreement is done and it's ready to go. And it has legal authority already, even if we didn't approve it here for some reason, that that's a signed deal. Because you had given us not only the authority to represent the Select Board, but to negotiate and sign an agreement. So we did that as well as the East Beach representatives. So it's a done deal. But their attorney asked to do that. I wasn't quite clear as to the reason, but that really doesn't matter. It was a reasonable request. So we agreed that we could, we could do that in open session. He wanted to see approval in open session by the select, the entire Select Board.
Okay.
But I don't recall why he'd want to postpone it. I see what you're saying there. There's no.
Well, yeah, I just, I, I tend to, you know, go by Jim's judgment because I really trust him. And if he just wanted to make sure that everything was okay and he didn't have, if he doesn't have it, if he indicated something other than this, then I would be happy to approve it. But I just don't want to step on Jim's toes and if he's, if he had a few things he wanted to fix before.
Yeah, I'm not aware of any. We could ask the gentleman who are here tonight if they know of anything that I.
Yeah, I sat down in the meeting and there was some exchange with the attorneys in the afternoon to some wording issues.
So this is final, like final wording. So, but it sounded like there might be a reason that they would need it soon, not two weeks from now. Are you aware of that?
Well, it would be to meet a deadline regarding the dismissal of the suit on the part of the East Beach Association. So that, that I was not aware of from our discussion, but maybe that is the case, then there's urgency to get it done tonight. In terms of back and forth between attorneys on wording, I'm aware of that. But that's, those are wordsmithing changes that we can get to at any time. And they're not substantive to the agreement itself.
So this is not to sign.
We don't want to reopen the negotiation on this. It's a done deal as far as I'm concerned.
So this is ratifying an approval, not signing the agreement ourselves, right? Is that, or?
That's right. Okay. Then I will.
You're more comfortable with that.
Yeah, I'm more comfortable with that because I want to make sure that Jim, once we get the actual agreement in, in place, that, you know, that can sign. So yeah, I'll, I'll move that we ratify the settlement.
That's fine, the settlement agreement.
Settlement agreement, yes.
Any discussion?
I just wonder if you might ask representatives of.
Do you guys have anything you wanted to say? You have to go to a mic is the only thing.
Hi, Kevin Kurt, President of East Beach Association, Improving Association. Got a couple of notes here that I can share with you guys in regards to what you were just talking about. You know, just a little bit of prepared remarks. First, I want to thank you guys for working with us in the effort to try and work an agreement. Found it real productive and an opportunity to at least find some common ground and create dialogue between both parties. Something that I think we were looking for before this all started, but it never came to fruition. And unfortunately, circumstances being as they were kind of led to where we're at today. So with that, we do have a little bit of work to be done to make this, you know, 100% working, living document, if you will. So, you know, we've got a couple of issues with plot plans, which we are ironing out with Conservation now. Hope to do that in the spirit of good faith and dialogue. We met on Friday morning with Jim and with Chris in regards to getting on the same page with everything and getting all those plot plans. The few that didn't get ratified 100% and stamped, whatever you want to call it, approved for those certain individuals that had some questions. And I think we can work towards that. The other issue which we wanted to make sure was the date on which the plot plans would become effective, you know, which I'm assuming would be with Conservation Commission's approval over the last few years. So again, that's something we can work out together going forward. But the context of the agreement itself, I think, is, you know, in order. Now, the other thing you guys touched upon was the deadline for Wednesday. And when you talked about Jim having that concern, I know the two attorneys were just hashing out that fine tuning on the language. So I think that's where that comes into play. I don't know if any of you had correspondence with Jim before he left after Friday. It appears that you haven't.
No.
So I think, you know, we're on the same page and, you know, all that's pretty much been ironed out. Just that question of plot plan for a certain few individuals, just to make sure everybody is meeting the requirements of what Conservation Commission is looking for and to, you know, move forward from this point with some cooperation and some dialogue and some understanding so we can both know where each other stands. This basically gives us an outline that both parties can follow and go to and work towards to get agreement on certain issues.
Dick, thank you. Dick, is it fair to say that the, what he's talking about with the conservation issue, the, the agreement talks about the criteria, one of the criteria being Conservation Agent approval, and it has some stuff in the plot plan. But the stuff he's talking about is not material to the contract, or is it? It sounds like what he was talking about is more material to the Conservation Agent approvals. But I don't know, is what he just said materially different than what might be in the contract?
I don't, I don't think so.
No, okay.
Mr. Kirk can speak for himself. But let me just embellish that. We, in this negotiation, we recognize the authority of the Conservation Commission. And they are, they or he's going to be more involved than he ever was before. That's clearly in the agreement. And that's something we all agree to. So that way, none of us, including the Town Administrator, whoever he or she may be down the road, can, can go off in a different direction. We have a protocol in place. We must adhere to it. I agree with Mr. Kurt that this is the plan and we've got to agree to it as well. So if the Conservation Commission is approving something and we, for some arbitrary reason, say, no, we don't, we don't approve. We don't have that authority. We've given that authority to the Conservation Commission. And that's, he would be the, say, the referee. So that's established in the agreement. And there's no question on that. That's not going to be changing.
Okay.
There may be some wordsmithing we talked about that.
Does that sound right to you? That aligns? Okay. All right, anything else?
I don't believe so.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second to ratify the approval of the settlement agreement. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous. We have one absentee, clearly you know.
We want to take care of that one, though.
May as well stay here.
Yeah, and then, so we have another. 3B is a request from Mr. Kurt, the President of the East Beach Improving Association, for permission to begin moving the trailers on the lots on Saturday, April 29, 2023. We generally approve these. That's technically not until May 1st, but we usually get the clear close by weekend, so.
I'll move it.
Any discussion? Did you want to say anything?
Typically, it begins in earnest on Saturday. I see that as the 29th. I don't know if anybody's going to start that day on the 28th. Would that be an issue to the board?
Uh, well.
Typically, we like to try. Are we splitting hairs is what I'm asking.
No, I think we're going to say the 29th, but, you know, the 29th.
All right. It, it helps make it easy for traffic purposes and everything else. You know, you get people on a Sunday drive and whatnot, so.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good to see you again.
Enjoy the season, if it ever warms up enough.
And you as well. Hopefully, you get out of here soon.
I wanted to see if we had the ones we have people here for.
Matt. Who's Matt? See.
Matt. Oh, Matt. Matt, you're here. Okay, sorry. I didn't see you. You snuck in. Do you want to come forward?
All the way over there.
Well, he's hiding. He's hiding behind the guy, the Mr. Garbadi over there.
I didn't quite have the right angle.
So 3C, we have a request from Matt Armendoo, the Board of Health Director, to approve the consent agreement for KP Law. So do you want to just give us a briefing on what that is?
Sure. So as part of the PHE, the Public Health Excellence Group, which consists of six communities, Westport, Marion, Matt Poisey, Rochester, Freetown, and Lakeville, we needed to come up with an IMA agreement for FY '24. So I drafted an IMA for FY '24, but because KP Law represents five of the six communities, they have, they had to send out this determination of consent pursuant to the rules of professional conduct before they can even review the draft that I sent over to them. So all these letters went out to each of the towns that they represent for their Select Boards to sign off on so they can actually, you know, begin reviewing the draft IMA. And that's why this is here in front of you guys, just to sign it so we can get moving with this IMA for FY '24.
Okay. Anybody have any questions?
We need a board.
I think we need. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous with one absence. So Matt, I want to thank you for the work that you did today at the Annex. So my understanding, you probably have more information. My understanding is that we had a plumbing problem or flooding at the Annex and that you had to chase a bunch of people. So did that get resolved? Do you know?
Yeah, the pump had just got done, pump in septic tank. The septic tank, there's just been a lot of years since it's been pumped, I'll just say that. And I was part of the problem. The other part of the problem was a clog in the line. And I called in Speedy Rutter, I think it was, came in this morning. And he spent most of the day there trying to snake lines and fix things. But, I mean, the flooding stopped. Card Monk had to cancel school this morning. But we got everything cleaned up. And, but there's definitely going to have to be some work, attention put in over there to some of the toilets in the basement level. You know, the plumber's going to have to come in and look at the seals. Some of them blew out. They're leaking from underneath the toilets. There's just some, some follow-up work that needs to be done. So hopefully, this doesn't happen again, at least to this degree.
Can we contact Diamond for that kind of stuff? They do do all, they did, they retrofit all these radiators with the expansion things and stuff. They do projects like that.
So I think, I mean, I think we need to talk to Town Administrator when we're back. I really especially want to thank you, Matt, because it's not your job chasing building maintenance problems at the Town Hall Annex. But Jim was gone. There's no, we, we don't have staff, right? Like, we, we don't have staff to provide the kind of custodial maintenance that you need in an emergency like that. We don't have the staff to back up the Town Administrator when the Town Administrator isn't here. You get Matt, whose jobs not include, you know, plumbing at the Town Hall, who, who has to do it. And we really appreciate that you did do it. I think it was really cooperative. But I know that that was a stress on you and I appreciate the work that you're doing over there.
Well, thank you. It's really not a problem. It's just, I don't mind doing it, stepping up and doing it. It's not a problem at all. It's just, I just want to make sure that it's okay to do it.
Yeah, yeah. So we did, I don't know if anybody went home, but I know I told Tanya that if we needed to close offices or something because it wasn't, there were, there were no working toilets over there for a while today. So I don't know if anybody did close the office, but I know I told her that if we need to, we need to, right?
No, everybody stayed open. We ended up getting them closed.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you. Is there anything else you wanted to talk about from, like, while you're here?
You guys want to get out of here. So it, there's a lot going on, you know, with the Board of Health, with, you know, our cesspool closeout, which is February 1st, 2026. So we're working on getting letters out to those cesspool, cesspools that we've identified. We've transcribed all of our files, all 8,000-plus files. Largely, Tanya, Donna, and Phil took on that project. And so we were able to identify what we know for cesspools. Letters are going out and hopefully just, you know, start working with people. But we're seeing good turnover despite, you know, sending letters and reminding people. Every, every time we have a Board of Health meeting, we're seeing at least two or three cesspools turn and off.
Good. Thank you. Anything for that?
Thanks, Matt.
Thanks, Matt.
Thanks, guys.
I wanted to skip ahead in the agenda to talk to Betty 4A, Betty Slade. Betty's here to talk about the Community Preservation Commission? CPC, what does it stand for? Projects that are going to be on the Town Meeting Warrant. So on the Town Meeting Warrant, this is Article, anybody know? Uh, nope. 10 is, no. Anyway, we'll find it. Oh, it's 21, Article 20, Community Preservation Fund. So you want to talk about the projects that you guys are working on over there?
Yes, you asked me the other day if I wanted to talk and I teased you and said, no.
But here you are.
So this year, the CPC has several projects and very good projects. And a lot of them are related to the town. So I sent you over the week and a couple of pieces of paper that talks about each one of them. each one of them, and I thought it would be more efficient if I let the people in the town know this. I'll just read it to them. So the first is, this is a, the Snell Creek Conservation Restriction. You all remember that. It's going to, this restriction will protect 29 acres of forest along Snell Creek at 559 Main Road. The town will hold the restriction, and the property will be managed by Buzzards Bay Coalition, and there will be public access. They've asked for, out of a project of 700,000, they have requested 150,000 for the conservation restriction. And we had an appraisal done of their appraisal, and it came out very well. They also have sold property to the young lady who wanted to have horse farm.
Oh, nice. That worked out.
That's worked out pretty well. I was here for that.
So she gets, she gets her horse farm.
So the, the second project is again under Recreation Open Space, and it's the Westport Youth Athletic Association. We're really trying to finish that project, which started like 18 years ago, and they have really worked hard at this. And so, the playing fields project to the day did not include irrigation, and there wasn't water available, but climate change has caught up with us in the 18 years, and it needs some kind of irrigation. So they've done a lot of work on it, and they've decided to do a project which would have two to three wellheads, and they would use generators instead of bringing in electricity, it's just too expensive, to do the pumping, and they'll have in-ground irrigation with submerged watering heads. The total cost is estimated at $180,450. So that is what we're requesting at town meeting. They are finishing up the dugouts and the fencing this year. So with the irrigation, they will be ready to go, fully ready to go.
And Lenny Potter's probably done half a million dollars worth of digging and work there, too. Just, you know, God, he's giving to the town, so.
So the third project is the town, a town playground project. The CPA was amended, the Community Preservation Act was amended a few years ago because of the demand of towns for playgrounds. And the only way you could replace a playground is if you had bought the playground with CPA funds, so they changed that. So now, across the state, we're updating playgrounds. So the Recreation Department, which is quite good, as you know, has done extensive research into expenses, quality, and types of equipment. And they're really questioned very diligently by the CPA, because they're talking about a million dollars in funding to replace fully the equipment at the bicentennial playground and here at the annex program, annex. So they're asking from CPA, 350,000 to do certain amount of work, which we will describe in our handout at town meeting. And they're hoping to get private funds, and I think that's a very good possibility.
Great.
That's awesome.
It is awesome.
Those playgrounds really need it.
Dana's doing an amazing job.
Dana is amazing.
Yeah, Dana's amazing. And Tim, classmate, Tim, who's been on CPC since the very beginning, working on all these.
I helped him with several projects.
Yes, yes. So, the, next is, we do community housing, and this year, there's been changes in the Affordable Housing Trust, so they haven't been able to do as much as they'd wanted to do. But they've asked for 60,000 to support their officer this year. It's the housing office and the housing officer. So he does a great deal of the work, so that will be 60,000. Then we have Historic Preservation, which this year will be three projects, and they all are related to the town. The first is Town Hall Preservation. I'm sure you've heard of this, because I've heard Jim talk about this a lot. But the town hall's an iconic historic building in Westport, enlisted among the state's historic assets, so we need to preserve it. And CPA funds can be used to rehabilitate and to preserve historic buildings. So the Westport Historical Commission also weighs in all these matters, and they've recommended the proposed work also. The town administrator has identified nearly a million dollars in work that needs to be done. But most of the funds will come from grants, and it's already been granted. And he's asking for 265,000 from CPA funds to do the electrical upgrades and the exterior restoration of the trim and other historic aspects, as well as to preserve it through painting. So CPA is asking the town, CPC is asking the town to give us 265,000 towards that project of a million dollars. The second project is, again, we're back at the historic Sanford School, up on Sanford Road. This building is well-known as the headquarters of the American Legion, and they have protected this building over 100 years, actually. Some of them say they were there in the beginning.
They might be right. The Vietnam Veterans Association also does a lot for that.
The what?
The Vietnam Veterans Association also does a lot for that, too.
So it originally was the Westport School Building Number 15. It was across the street, and they moved it over. And they've long desired a proper handicapped access, and this year, this is what, one of the things that they're going to do. And not only that, they plan to take the bathroom, the two bathrooms that are there, and turn it into one handicapped bathroom. So it will be a handicapped, accessible building, which is good for the future, no matter whether it's town or private or whatever. They also are going to rebuild the ramp and the deck in front and remove the, the side door and all of that stuff on the side that really shouldn't be there. And they're going to do a complete exterior shingling, wood shingles, cedar shingles most likely, so it'll, it'll look good. And as I said, they're going to do the handicapped bathroom. And they're asking just 180,000.
Wow.
That's a bargain.
That's a bargain.
Very good. So the last is, you know, we have this year some problems. People may not understand that at the town farm, although it's leased to the trustees of reservation, there is a, an apartment there, and there's an outhouse and a couple of other buildings which the town has to maintain. And Geraldine Millen did this for, for very many years. We had a couple of serious problems there. And so we looked at it again, and Tony Millen, actually, did the work for that. And so, we're going to restore the specific restoration of the Eve, Sofits, Fashions, Gutters, some replacement of shingles, replace the existing door and trim, and restore the two-hole or outhouse, of course, and repaint the carriage, shingle roof, paint the roof, and replace the water heater. And the total funds requested are 36,625, which is also very good. So the last thing that we put on the, the warrant is CPA funds have to be allocated at least 10% to the three categories that I mentioned today. And they can do that in two ways, and it's either through projects or through reserves. So we don't have enough projects to meet the full amount that we need to put into community housing. So we will, we're asking for 34,000 to go into reserves, which will be used by community housing in the future. The administrative funds is, we're asking for 35,000, that's probably as much as we can ask. We hardly use any of that, but we need to have it just mainly in cases of where we have to do any kind of special appraisals, legal fees, that kind of thing, or, or some, pardon me?
Change orders.
That's right. And sometimes, sometimes it comes up very handy. We also use it for clerical help. The last item is called budgeted reserves, and that's a CPA thing, that you take whatever's left over, you can't, you use from the funds that are allocated, the new funds that are allocated to CPA, and you allocate them to projects, reserves, and whatever's left over, you put into budgeted reserves, enabling you to use those funds during the fiscal year. Otherwise, we have to wait till the next fiscal year. So that, these, those are our projects.
Got some amazing projects.
It is. It's a really good, it's a good list this year. We're all very proud of it.
Anybody have anything for Betty? All right, thank you, Betty.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Betty.
So Article 21 on the warrant. I'm going to go back to the agenda unless there's anything specific you, I, there's one more person in the room in public, so I was going to give him the opportunity. Did you want to say something, or you have anything for us?
No, again, I'm here on Pillar Body with Energy Systems Group.
You have to go to the mic if you're going to talk.
Just here, Pillar Body with Energy Systems Group. You're also looking at a Comprehensive Energy Management Services Program. And I know some of the things that you talked about tonight, like the town hall, and you've lost grants, it's going to be part of that project. So wanted the opportunity to meet the community. I know that you're on the Energy Committee, and the Capital Improvement Committee, and Infrastructure Committee, so you get your little, double duty, triple duty, and I just wanted to hear how you about.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we're back to three D. So a request to approve the employment agreement for the highway surveyor. Jim has recommended approval.
I'll move it.
Sorry.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous with one absence. We have a request from Bernadette Oliver, the temporary town clerk, to approve the warrant for the April 11, 2023 election. So April 11, 2023, there are contested races, there's a question on the ballot, so get out and vote.
Move it.
Sorry.
Do we have any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We, I think we have a discussion in, in a minute about the diamond, about, so I, I guess just while we're, no, we wait till we, okay. Three F, we have a request to amend the town meeting warrant to include the Board of Selectman Authorization to Negotiate and Execute Solar Payment and Lose of Taxes Agreement and the old high school article. So there's two things on here. So one is, we closed the warrant, but we found that the Massachusetts laws have changed regarding solar pilots. So town meeting has to authorize the select board or somebody to negotiate and execute the pilot agreement. So Jim has asked, let's talk about that one first. So Jim is asking that we put an article for the pilot agreements on the warrant.
I'll move that.
Sorry.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous. And then on our version where, where we have Jim's recommendations, we have a couple of different options here on the wording for the article about what to do with the old high school building. So this is Article 26, so we had a placeholder for Article 26. So we have a couple, we have option from the Long-Term Building Committee, we have amended by Jim Hartnett, and then we have like a different kind of version of an option by Jim Hartnett. So Brian, you want to?
Yeah, I really think Jim did a great job on Option 2, tell you through, that's, that gives us everything we really need to go forward if they decide to go forward. So there it is, there's a, there's a dollar amount to continue to go forward. That's an agreement that you want to save the, so it's kind of all in there. So I would move that, we can go with Option 2, which is to see if the town will vote and raise appropriate borrow and transfer from available funds, an amount not to exceed $200,000, so it can be expended under the direction of the Board of Selectmen, or the Select Board, for a feasibility study and project manner to evaluate municipal buildings and the use of the old high school building and property, 19 Main Road, Westport, for new uses, including but not limited to municipal use, educational use, school administrative use, and housing, and or take any action relative thereto. So that would be the wording. I would move that, move that wording. And that way, we know, do you want to save it, and do you want to spend the money? Answers both questions at once. I think that's a great option.
Yeah, I'll second. I, I, I actually like that idea a lot. So it's not just, what should we do with it? It's, should we take the next step and spend some money?
Are you going to pay the money to do it?
Yeah.
I love it. It works beautifully. That's exactly what we were looking for, so let's do that.
I'm sorry, what were you?
I was thinking one, because we already spent money to do two, but let's.
Well, no, we didn't. We spent money to, to evaluate the building
Right.
for what it could possibly be used for.
Right.
Not for a specific use, and what that would, exactly what that would cost. And that's kind of what this is going to do. It's going to narrow it down. Yes, if you want to do this, if you want to use it for municipal uses in school and all these things, this is what, this is the path forward, this is what we should do. So it asks, so it's both asking the town if you want to do it, and if you're going to pay for it, and.
Well, this is only a little, like, to be fair, it's, do you want to pay to do more work, study?
Exactly.
More, evaluate it more, right?
Exactly, exactly. To go forward with a plan, with an actual plan to, to use it, so.
Is the 500,000 going?
It's 200,000.
For the free fashion amount?
No, we had 500,000 for micro要用that building. Does that go on now?
We have not, I don't believe that has been expended. I believe some of it was for some of the studies and evaluations and appraisal, but I don't think it's, I don't think it was that much.
So it sounds like, it sounds like we'd like some clarification on the source of funding?
Yeah, see if we still have that. It might have expired.
But, but I think we can still, I mean, obviously, we can vote on this, but we can still put it on the warrant this way, and then we can identify a source of funding another time.
It's always better to knock it down if we don't need it, so that's why, knock down the money.
Are there any other comments on that option about this approach?
Well, I like it, because it's specific. It's specific to a motion, an item, an article, and it's not just what you think. It's, if you support this, we need a motion to bring it forward in small steps.
And the money to do it.
Yeah, and it's, and the money to do it. So it's, it's definitive, it's, it's clear. It's something to vote on after having discussions. So I, I think it's a good, a good approach.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 So Paula, as soon as we can get like a draft of the warrant out on the, on the website, I didn't sit there earlier. Three G, we have a request from the Buzzards Bay Coalition to hold their annual watershed bicycling event on Sunday, October 1.
I'll move that.
Subject.
The annual, I said, subject.
Police said fire.
Subject, police recommend.
We got police fire.
Police said fire.
All right, I'll say.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So we already did H, and we did four A. So four B, so we have this on the warrant. So we just closed the warrant for the April 11 election. There is one question on the warrant. This is to do with the Diamond Project debt exclusion. So it's the same question we've been talking about before. I know there's still a lot of confusion. The town is going forward with the Diamond Project regardless of what happens with this, with this article. The question on the ballot is saying, should we use excluded debt so it doesn't come out of the operating budget, or, or is it going to have to come out of the operating budget? That is the question. So I personally would encourage you to vote yes on the debt exclusion, so that it does not have to come out of our operating budget. But I don't know, you, I had asked that we put this back on here again, if you're going to keep reminding.
Really, just for purposes of reminding people of the importance of this. We did have in the Shorelines from Bob Daler, a nice article supporting this ballot question, to vote yes for that, for that reason. I have authored a, a letter that will be going in next week, a little different take on it, saying the cost of doing it, the cost of not doing it, and particularly talking about the budget problem if we, if we don't do this, and making it clear that this is not about yea or nay on Diamond, it's about financing it. So I look forward to that, and hope others do, too. So that, that's all there was. I was hoping to get some signs. There were signs that said, support a new diamond, when we had the town meeting last year, if you recall. There's actually one sign up on the Sanford Road that I got to look at. It doesn't quite do the trick, and I don't, personally, I don't have the time to, to come up with some signs. I don't know how important that is. It's important we get the word out. But anyway, that's, just to keep this on the, on the forefront, which we're doing, something by discussing.
Just radio. Just radio.
Yeah, I think even any, any kind of support Diamond signs would be good, I think. I don't think they need to say yes on question one, because it's kind of late now.
Lady's brother was a print shop.
Yeah.
That might be where you get the signs done. I don't know that as a fact.
So I know on the Candidates Night that we had the Business to Business and somebody else sponsored it. Business to Business, Bay Coast Bank, I think, sponsored the Candidates Night, and I know they gave me an opportunity to talk briefly about this question, too. So that was on a YouTube video, where there's a brief explanation of it.
I just want to remind people, currently in the United States, there's a three to six million tradesperson deficit, meaning there are three to six million trades jobs that are going unfilled, because we are losing tradespeople to retirement, and quite honestly, they're passing away faster than we can replace them. This is a, a step toward the right direction with the building of Diamond. They're, they're going to be able to, I do believe, double their capacity with this new building and everything. But not supporting projects like this will mean that in 15 and 20 years, you will not be able to find anyone to fix your home, to build a school, to do anything. We need tradespeople. It's, we are in desperate need of tradespeople. Ask anyone in the trades, trying to find people willing to put that kind of hard work in and that apprenticeship in to actually become a tradesperson is difficult enough. And we don't need to shoot ourselves in the foot by taking away our, our operating budget in order to support Diamond. So I'd ask people to really consider voting yes on this also, because I personally, being a tradesperson, I am seeing it firsthand. We need to, we need more tradespeople. We need people, you make a great living, you can have a decent life, and you don't have any college debt. So just a plug for Diamond.
Anything else on, on the question? All right, so four C, the Prop 2 and 1/2 override discussion. I do want to point out that we're meeting with the Finance Committee and the School Committee on Wednesday, so the budget is the topic, right? The, the budget and the potential override budget. There's still some confusion that, I don't know how many, we're going to have to just keep talking about it over and over to eliminate the confusion or minimize the confusion. There, there is no warrant article for an override. The overrides are not decided at town meeting warrant. Overrides are decided at a special election. It is not on the April election ballot. It's an unspecified future date election. So what's happening at town meeting is that we are going to ask the town to appropriate money if an override passes. So, so you're going to have the base budget that's funded through taxation and local, local revenue, existing revenue, taxation, state aid, that kind of thing. So we're going to have Article 5 is the regular budget. Article 6 is a supplemental budget, subject to an override passing. And you don't have to do it that way, but the reason that we did it this way is so that people can see where we're intending to put the money. So we have a, we've been proposing a $3 million override. That $3 million is nowhere on the town meeting warrant. That $3 million is nowhere on the town meeting warrant. What Article 6 is doing is saying, we want, or we're proposing that we appropriate $1 million from taxation through the override, and here's where we want it to go. So it's just going to be a supplemental budget contingent on the override for the fiscal year that we're approving it in. So I know lots of confusion. It's not yes or no on the override. It's just if there is an override, here's how we're going to spend the money. I do think that there is going to be discussion at town meeting floor about how much should we appropriate and where should it go? Like, should we appropriate a million? Should we appropriate 3 million? I think that's valid discussion, but it's, we're not voting on the override at the town meeting. We're voting if an override passes, this is where it goes. I hope I didn't just make it more confusing.
Well, just so that we don't have to go back and have another town meeting if the override passes, we won't have to have a special in order to vote how the money is being spent. We've already voted that. So we just continue as business as usual and can use those funds in the way that was appropriated at town meeting on that contingency. I think, I think that's the most confusing thing in the group, is why are we passing too much? Well, one, if the override doesn't pass, we go by option one. If the override does pass, we do go by option two. That's it.
Right. Dick?
If we could just go over this a little, one more time, so to speak. So the question of the override that would ultimately appear on the ballot, when would that be decided? And by whom and how?
The select board, we would have to call a special election.
Within so many days.
Within, no, we would have to call a special election to have an override vote. It's under the discretion of the select board to call an override vote at a special election.
So it's decoupled from the town meeting?
Yes.
Town meeting is not voting to do it.
No.
Although we did actually do something akin to that with Middle High, where people made presentations, we had turnout for it, a huge turnout, if you recall. And then as a result of that, we then followed with a decision to put it on the ballot.
But that, that was because we were approving the project. So it was at a town meeting warrant because we had to approve the appropriation for the project. And this is what we're, you can do an override without any appropriation at all. But what we, the, the finance committee in particular said they wanted to see where the money goes on year one, for sure. They want to know the plan for how we're going to spend the override money. It's why we did it the way we did it.
Well, I understand that, so it is different. And Diamond, for example, is an excluded debt, and that was approved by town meeting almost a year ago.
Participation in the Diamond Project was approved at town meeting. The debt exclusion was not. We agreed to participate in the project.
Yeah, okay.
At a town meeting. We didn't, so we said, yes, we want to participate.
Well, this is, this is confusing to the voters as to what's going to happen and when. So let's say things go well and there's a lot of support for the supplemental budget. When would be our target to get this on the ballot?
Well, I think it would be, what would you like? When do you think it should go on the ballot? The sooner it could go on the ballot, the sooner you could make those funds available for the current fiscal year, right? So I would, I would envision like in August, maybe, or September. But I don't know.
Well, do we think that decision might be somewhat dependent on the Diamond vote itself?
Well, we'll know the outcome of the Diamond vote on April 12.
We will. But can go one of two ways, in my view, both are worth discussing. I mean, if it passes, great. I hope it does. If it passes by a lot, that's one thing. If it passes by not much, that's another thing. If it doesn't pass, that's also another thing. And I think these two issues are coupled. Unless we want to go to the voters within, say, a four-month period of time for two money issues. I don't know if that's optimal. I'm not saying I'd be against it necessarily. Sometimes you just let it roll and see what happens and hope for the best and promote it, which we are doing. But I think there is a connectivity between those two issues that has not yet been fully appreciated. Even not, I'm just trying to get my arms around it.
You're talking about the connectivity between the Diamond vote and the override?
Yeah.
So the Diamond vote is going to be determined one way or the other on April 12, or whenever the town clerk certifies the election results, right? So on April 11, we're going to vote. April 12, we'll know if it passed or not, right? Our budget that we have assumes that we have to eat the operating cost for the, the FY '24 budget assumes there's no Diamond override.
Well, that's the minimums anyway.
It's right, it's not very much. And so there's no connection at all.
That's right.
But if we don't, if it fails, if the Diamond vote fails, we're okay for fiscal year '24, but fiscal year '25, we have a hole, right? That might influence the amount of money that we want to put in an override. Is that what I'm trying to make?
Yeah, that's starting, that's kind of the thing that I mean. There's more to it than that. It's looking at the Diamond vote as a precursor for what could happen in an override vote. And we, we would be hoping that the Diamond measure would pass strongly. If it doesn't pass strongly, or if it doesn't pass at all, I think we've got to really wonder about what to do next with the override.
Well, we could, I mean, we, I think you're right. I think based on whatever comes, we can decide not to call for an override. It's our, this body is the one that's going to call for an override vote. So if we don't want to do that, we won't do it. But I think the, the question at town meeting will be, where do you want the override money to go? And, you know, do we want to split it? Because we've kind of divided a little destabilization, 54, 46 to town and school. Maybe someone's going to say, no, the school needs more, or no, the town needs more, or whatever. That's the conversation at town meeting. But yeah, I think if the Diamond vote fails, we have a $400,000 hole in the next year's budget that might, that makes the override even more important.
Yeah, but if it fails, then you have to question if the mood of the voters is such that they would be interested in an override.
Right, we'll have to cross.
These things are all subjective, I do admit. But I do think, first of all, the immediate issue is Diamond.
The immediate issue is Diamond. This is a project that we overwhelmingly supported. There were, you know, the town meeting that approved that Diamond project overwhelmingly supported the project. I don't think anybody there intended to hurt Westport Community Schools and fire and police and highway. I don't think anybody meant to do that in that vote. But if you vote no on the Diamond vote, you are going to hurt Westport Community Schools, police, fire, highway, library, every service in town will be affected if you vote no on the Diamond vote. And sure, maybe we could try to recoup and get in an override later, but it's, that is how important that Diamond vote is.
Agreed.
Yeah, so there we go. I got passionate on my side.
Just wanted to ask, you, you mentioned that you were going to give a choice of whether it's a one-year or a three-year at a town meeting, or are you going to give a budget for one year and three years?
No, we're only giving a budget for one year. Now.
But you want, okay, the budget for one year, but you want the override for three years.
So, so.
How are you going to do that?
So what the finance committee has asked for us to do is to clearly explain how we intend to spend the override money, right? So Article 6 on the warrant will explain how we want to spend the FY '24 money. So the, what Article 6 is going to say is that we want to take $1 million increase in the levy limit. This is how we want to spend it for FY '24. What the finance committee would like us to do is show a plan for what do we plan to do in FY '25 and FY '26. And so that's where we have been, asked the town administrator to say, all right, let's say we have, we increase, we're going to, we want to increase the levy limit by $3 million, because we don't want to go to the voters every year. We want to go once to the voters. So we want to increase the levy limit by $3 million on the override vote. But in the first fiscal year, we only want to include in taxation $1 million. And then the next year, an additional $1 million. And, but what finance committee says, how do you, how are you going to spend it? When you, when you did that second $1 million, how are you going to divide it up?
Well, that explanation helps. Because it wasn't clear what first, it sounded like it was just for the one year, but I understood.
So, so part of the, part of the challenge is that a town meeting can only commit to whatever it's voting on right now. It can't commit to future, right? So we can't put a ballot question that says in FY '25, we're going to do this, and FY '26, we're going to do this. But they have asked us to put together material that we're going to, this is what we're going to talk about on Wednesday, to say, here's how we plan to spend it. This is our plan. And we've said a million each year for three years. We want to divide it basically 54, 46, is what we've said. Did you have something?
Oh, just wanted, the reason being was we didn't want it to all hit one year.
Right.
So you have an incremental increase each year so that you're not hit with this, you know, big increase one year. So you can, it's going to be a little easier for people to absorb it yearly than over, all at once.
And I know, and we've got some stuff, we, on the list of things that are on it, we have one more police officer, one more firefighter, an assistant building inspector. We have assistant animal control officer. We have like real people that we want to add in this override, but it's not excessive. It's, you know, it's, it's, but they're necessary. We, we have no backup for animal control right now. We have no backup for the building inspector right now. Like, we're really, and the police and fire have been shorthanded forever, right?
And these are all positions that were funded 20 years ago. I mean, 20 years ago, we probably had 20 or 30 more people working in town, in town offices and police department, fire department. These are all things that over the last 20 years, with all the budget cuts, you go back and you can look at what the state has cut from our funding yearly for the last 20 years. And if we had increased with inflation what the state should have given us for funding, we're looking at almost $20 million over the last, 20 or 30 million dollars we've been cut in funding from the state over the last 20 years. And it's never been restored. We're like, oh, well, we're having a tough budget year, and then they have a huge budget year like this year where they have $3 billion extra, and they're not restoring what they took from us before. So we're, we're stuck in this situation where we're not going to get bail over the state or the Fed. We have to bail ourselves out. And that's kind of how you have to look at it, because the tax dollars you're sending to the state and the Fed are coming back to us. But you can actually spend your tax dollars here, and they'll actually be spent on town services and town things, and they'll invest in this town specifically without any cut to the state or the Fed. That's direct democracy, and it's a way that you can directly affect the quality of life in your town. That's where I really want to stress that this is not going to go off to the state, and they're going to take it and decide how to administer it. This is going to go directly to your town. We're telling you how we're going to spend it.
Thank you. Anything else on the override? All right, I think we already covered the, so we had D, town meeting warrant article discussion. So we talked about adding that one for the pilot. We talked about the change in the long-term building committee. Were there any other articles discussion that anybody wanted to bring up? Okay, so now we're down to the town administrator, of course, so he's not here. So we won't talk about him. We have minutes of March 6. We don't have Ann here normally. Do you have? No, you're not. So we don't have Ann, so we'll skip the March 6 minutes. We don't have the bill warrant because we're missing Ann. Let's talk about liaison committee reports. Brian?
I had a really good energy committee report, as you had heard as Betty was speaking about the energy project. We got 800-plus thousand from the Mass Green Building Fund, basically. And so we're going to be able to spend that on these improvements at town hall, which are desperately needed. It will mean that we, we're going to have to wait another couple of years to get some more funding as far as assets, green energy projects are concerned, because they basically gave us what they normally give in a three-year period this year. But kudos to Kathy Stanley, who knocked it out of the park on that one, got us an exceptional grant this year to do amazing projects. We have a few other major projects that will probably be done over the next three or four years. But we really, really got, I won't say lucky, because people did their due diligence, but because of the hard work of a lot of people, we were able to secure some serious funding. So that's great. I, you know, as you know, this will be my second to last meeting. I did inform the energy committee that I would like to, and I'll inform the select board now, that I would like to remain on at least as an at-large member. And I would also stay on as the building rep for CIPC and also as an either at-large or building rep for their long-term building committee. So I'll make those.
We're not getting rid of you?
What's that?
We're not getting rid of you?
You're not going to get completely rid of me. But I, you know, again, I don't have the time to put into being a selectman, a select board member anymore. Unfortunately, things have changed as far as my business and my personal life is concerned with that. But I will, it's not, I'm not running away. I'm just going to leave you in the works. I'll help out where I can. In those committees, I feel like I can do the best, you know, I can give you the best amount of work for, you know, bang for buck.
Thank you. Steve?
Bike committee met last week. Chris, the town planner was there and Representative Schmidt was there and come up with ideas to approve the village and maybe a grant coming in the future and that. That's what our town plan is working on now. And we'll be doing more bike recycling at the landfill. I'll fill you in more on that in the next meeting.
The audit committee met last week and we were, the first item on the agenda was, what is the status of the fiscal '22 audit? This is usually done by now. So it's running a little bit late. And Sue said it's coming soon, and next day it shuts up. So we will digest it. It's a good report. I went right to the part that talks about major findings and no critical, what do you call it? Major, there's a county.
Deficits.
Material weakness.
Material, no material weakness. Second year in a row, anyway. And there are a number of follow-ups, but nothing of great consequence. So the audit committee will meet again soon, maybe within the next 30 days, go over that. And then, of course, later we'll ask Tony to appear again, probably by Zoom to give his report. But it, so far it looks good. It looks like a lot of follow-ups from the prior year, things that are already undertell. So I don't expect anything here that's untoward. That's it.
Then for me, we had the climate resiliency committee. There are tons of work going on for tons of people for climate resilience. We are, the internet advisory committee has been meeting. There is a Westport Fiber website to talk about the municipal light plant. I haven't scheduled that on a select board meeting, but we'll schedule that before town meeting. I had a school building committee, steering committee meeting, because we still have bills that we have to pay. We haven't, like, can't quite close that one out, but it's.
Almost there.
Almost there.
Almost there.
I think that's it for me. Do we have anything from the public? Anything else from the board? We'll see you Wednesday. Sorry, go ahead.
No, I'm just saying, I'm motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
No, you're second.
Oh, second, okay.
All in favor? Aye, that's unanimous. Thank you.